I. I think this is all set up under me. So. Okay, we're recording. I guess I can do all this. All right, once again, we'll start the meeting for January ninth, twenty twenty four. Please all rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic.
For which it stands.
One nation. Under God. Indivisible. With liberty and justice for all. Right, thank you. Okay. So. I guess moving on to item number three, which is the first slack movements updates, really just. Obviously excited the lieutenant governor is coming today to talk about the five hundred thousand dollars the town received. We'll talk about that later in our. There's a press conference here at ten thirty. That will be a grand award for our generator project. And obviously, as we also have another storm approaching this evening where there is expected to be some power outages. So we do encourage people to prepare for that. There's going to be high winds and possible coastal flooding as well. So just want to be mindful of that and. Timely given, we need to continue to invest in. Providing resources for the community as we go through these storm events, which are becoming more and more frequent. I think this is anticipated to be a little bit more of an event than what we had two back to back in December. That. It was kind of iffy if there was going to be power outages here. They seem a little bit. I know every source is preparing for a higher level event. So. So that is my update. Any liaison reports or selectmen comments?
I have one quick one. For the Affordable Housing Committee, that group is currently working hard to start some new public information outreach. Initiatives. One of the things they're working on doing is going to be publishing a newsletter. And that's forthcoming. They're getting ready the first iteration of that. They've done some really great updates to their portion, their page on our website as well. So if anybody wants to take a look and get some more information about what the Affordable Housing Committee is doing. That's a great resource. And then. Just yesterday Peggy and I, we had a meeting with Affordable Housing Chair and also our Planning and Zoning Chair. And there's going to be some public information sessions forthcoming. Those haven't been scheduled yet, but. Just some information about what's going, what what those groups are working on. So but keep an eye out for that. Dates will be coming.
Hey, great. Yes, that'll be a helpful, I think, conversation to have with the public about housing needs. Any other liaison reports? I know it's still beginning of the year, so.
I'll go quickly. The Academy Building Committee still expects to be receiving some very detailed cost estimates by the end of this month. Which they will be sharing with us early next month.
Okay. That's helpful. And I know we're. In waiting in anticipation to see if we get this additional four million dollars from the federal government. But it's not looking promising right now based on the conversations going on in Washington. So. But we may know by then also one way or the other if we're going to be receiving this additional grant. Okay, well, moving on then to citizens' comments. Any hands raised, Genie? No. Okay.
It's like Scott is on.
Okay, I don't know. He said he had an appointment or so his hand is raised. So I think he needs to be up. Okay, he is joining us. Do I have to? I have to let him? Hey, Scott.
Hey.
Hey, you can hear us, okay?
Yeah, I'm just remote, so I may not be on video.
Okay, all right, great. All right, well, we just started. We went through. We're just on citizens' comments. So I guess moving on to, there doesn't seem to be any hands raised right now at some Scots. We'll move on to the consent agenda and I would like to make a motion. To approve and amend the consent agenda to add item six F. Which is the appointment of Tim Lund as provisional building official for a period of ninety days as a as per state statute twenty nine dash two sixty two. I sent around that information to the board via email.
I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion on the consent agenda as amended? No? Okay, great. With that, then, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, great. Consent agenda passes. All right, great. And I'm sorry, I obviously got this cold and it has not gone away, so I'll try to solder through this. Item number seven is discuss and take action to accept the pending DEC Urban Act Grant in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars for the school generator project and to authorize the first select moment to sign. All necessary contracts and documents pending Board of Finance approval.
I watched.
Second.
Okay, great. So this was, we got word about this a few weeks ago, very exciting news that. The state is awarding us five hundred thousand dollars. This is on the project to add an emergency generator at Paulson, so we could have our emergency shelter moved there. It's a three million dollar project. And so now. Fortunately, half of it will be grant funded, but we received a million dollars last year from. The federal government through a community congressional directed spending grant. And then this additional five hundred will help offset more funding that's going to be needed by the town to pay for the generator. And this project is obviously. Complicated because the good thing is we wanted to align this with the. Work going on at Paulson for HVAC, so that we. Have some cost savings from combining some of the electrical work and upgrades that would be required. But and also the. You know, and trying to structure this so that it all kind of gets done uniformly at the same time. So that's a good thing that we're continuing to get funding for this. And now we'll have enough, I think, to preorder the generator. These things are twelve to eighteen months out in terms of stock, you know, getting being able to get these kinds of things. So we'll have enough. Funding available immediately with the grant money to preorder this when they complete the design. And so the design is a little bit depending on how the HVAC project gets designed, which we approved in December through town meeting. That process is moving forward. So it's all kind of coming together, which is good. So I don't know if there's any other questions. I know we've talked about this project a number of times. No? Okay, great. Well, with that, I guess, and this would, you know, with that, all in favor of approving or accepting the DEC D Urban Act Grant, the amount of five hundred thousand dollars, say aye.
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 Aye, great. And we're grateful, obviously, for. Receiving this grant and shout out to our representatives in Hartford, Senator Cohen, and Representative Parker for working hard advocating to get Madison Projects. Part of the State Bonding Commission. And then we'll also have this press conference I was mentioning at ten thirty where Lieutenant Governor Beisowitz will be coming down to visit Madison and just talk about the grant award that we received. That's today. If it's hopefully the weather holds, so. All right, moving on to item number eight. Discuss and take action to award the contract between the town of Madison and Beta Group. Oh. Apologize. So I actually would like to. Table item number eight. I don't know if John sent. Did you guys get an email from John Anako? So this was the pavement study that we had talked about in the fall that we wanted to update that there's new technology. We clearly know there's an issue in terms of. Some of the roads and how our current rating is not capturing perhaps the status or of some of our roads. And then we found out that the our cog are. Are. What is it called? The Regional Council of Governments is actually going to be going for a grant. And so to pay for this, so all the towns would benefit, and that'll happen in March, correct, John?
Yes, they'll make a selection in March.
Okay, so that so we won't have to fund the the study now, right? And so that's a good thing. So we're saving ourselves thirty six thousand dollars. So. So we just got word that that was moving forward. And so for so we just thought we'll put on hold our study. It'll be delayed a little bit, but at least we don't have to pay for it. So. So that was that was good news to find out. So. So we'll table item number eight. I think at that point, we'd be bringing back probably. I don't know if they've hired Beta or is it?
No, what it is, so we just I just received notice from the from Scrog yesterday. We we put in, I put this into Scrog in October. A request to get funding through this UPWP grant. And. You know, we started talking to Beta and Street Scan very early on. And I didn't want to delay the pavement study. I wanted to get this started in the spring, so we went forward with interviewing these two companies. We received proposals and, as you know, we were ready to make a recommendation here. Just coincidentally, yesterday I got notice from Scrog that Madison did get. Was awarded this eligibility for. The grant dollars for this paving study.
Oh, so this is the joint thing because they had talked about doing some sort of like a joint contract. Okay, so this is just our project through UPW money.
Correct. So there's three Scrog towns all got various projects awarded. Madison was one, and that was for the paving study.
Okay.
So. I'm gonna, you know, I'm gonna recommend to Beta to put in their, you know, submit qualifications package to Scrog. And then we'll see what what happens.
Okay. Okay, all right. So that'll be hopefully continued. And you were thinking more like March is when we'd be able to.
Right, and it really doesn't delay the the project because we can't begin the the paving survey until the roads clean up, clear up. Right, realistically, will be March at earliest.
Okay, great. All right, well, good. That's always good.
Can we just talk quickly about sort of what we're hoping to get as a result of of this study? And John and I have talked a little bit about this. I think it's great that we're going to be re-cataloging and updating the inventory of of the roads and their status. I think that's definitely the time has come for that. But. I'm hoping that we get. From that, not just a status of the roads, but a a plan or roadmap, if you will. Of of how we're going to. Bring the roads all up to a metric that. John feels is appropriate. For the for the roads. And including maybe even a one-time infusion into the road fund to make sure that. We are getting to a place where our ongoing work is really just maintenance. You know, and not catch up, not perpetually catching up to the roads. So as we go and John, as you endeavor to do this, I'm hoping that that's part of what you'll come back to us with at the end of this work.
Yes, excuse me, that's that's the goal. So it really just the first. Phase of this will be data collection, which is getting, you know, ranking all the roads and putting their condition. Index on the roads, but. The the company is also going to help us. Come up with a plan. And a and a cost figure to. To allow us to bring the roads up to a certain, you know, standard over some period of time. And that's what I want to bring to the boards. You know, when that study is completed is. You know, I we're at, say, seventy now, we want, we think we should be at a maybe an eighty rating. You know, the higher number being hundred being perfect. Some some higher level. And what what will the cost value be associated with getting to getting the road network up to a certain level? And how long is that going to take? So we can, you know, the company will help us run scenarios. You know, maybe it's it's, I don't know, just get making up numbers, one and a half million dollars over three years or over five years will get us up to a certain level. So I can present, you know, scenarios to the boards. That I think will. And that the 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 analysis will show that we should be able to get up to a certain level, but this is how much it's going to cost. And that'll save, you know, that'll save. Money in the long run because we'll be, there'll be more preventative maintenance and less sort of reconstruction tech techniques.
And I think this is kind of similar to how we approached the vehicles, you know, where we had the study done and he came back and gave us. You know, best, you know, our wish list, right? Here's if everything, we brought everything up to. Levels that would be, you know, the best in terms of the status of the vehicles and the replacement schedule. And then we ended up working out a schedule that we could afford. From that, but but it was a good starting point, so. But that will come after, obviously, this the survey is completed.
Right.
Okay, so we'll table item eight, you know, to be returned to when we actually have more. You know, detail on the, I guess, using the cog UPW fund. So that'll be a grant award rather than spending money out of the budget. Any other questions on that? Nope. Okay, great. All right, thanks. Item number nine. Discuss and take action to award a contract for the Brown Intermediate School Interior Improvements.
So move.
Second.
Okay. Who seemed to have lost Al and then Peter Anderson, who is our soon to be new facilities director, who's joined us as of last week. Will be coming up to talk about this. Bill McMinn was in transit, and I guess there were some problems with his flight, so he's not able to join us this morning. So. All right, great. Welcome. Welcome, Peter. And we have Felicia here, who has been working closely with Bill on all these projects. Lucky you, Peter, huh? Your second week and you get to.
Yes, I Bill is unfortunately on flight right now from Dallas to Hartford because he got deferred due to the storm out in the Midwest. So he's not, he's not here with us.
Okay, great. Why don't you just give a real quick overview? You were Felicia because I know Felicia was working with Bill on this, right, of this particular project?
Sure, sure. I'm gonna I'm gonna read actually what Bill submitted to you guys. It was the Facility Department sent out a request for bids on November seventeenth, twenty twenty three for the Brown School Interior Renovations. We received four bids on December twenty second, twenty twenty three. After review, we are recommending to the Board of Selectmen to award the lowest bidder, A Second Dino and Sons Incorporated, in the amount of one million, six hundred and eighty seven thousand. At this time, we're committing to phasing out the project and will be moving forward with an attached credit of minus three hundred and eighty eight thousand, seven hundred and ninety five dollars, as discussed during the December twenty eighth. With Second Dino and Sons meeting. I think he sent an attached proposal and credit. The original bid is one million, six hundred and eighty seven thousand. With approved credits, we will start with phase one in the amount of one million, two hundred and ninety eight thousand, two hundred and five dollars. If time allows, we'll move forward with phase two interior walls, doors and millwork, as well as phase three exterior walls and doors.
So so are these change orders or are they? Because I was a little confused. Why would the board would be voting on this? And I'm not not trying to put you on the spot. Felicia, do you know, like, are these? Just things came in cheaper or it was a change order for the actual project?
These are credits because, as you know, bringing Brown up to the K through five. Is part of the overall larger school plan that was put to referendum. At this point in time, the bids came in over what the remaining budget was. For the renovations of Brown. So right now, these are not change orders. These are reduced scope of work. While we wait. Until the end of this cycle maintenance period to know that for sure that there is a money in the maintenance budget to proceed with the full scope of work.
Okay, so he's going to use remaining maintenance funds if he can to get the full scope. If not, basically, he's just reducing the scope. Okay, he's working within his budget, right?
Yes. Yes.
All right.
And knowing the winter period is coming up, we do not want to allocate money that might need to be used for emergency repairs.
Right. I hear what you're saying. Okay. And so this won't impact the timing of the project at all by. Holding off on some of these things.
No.
Okay.
So just just. Yeah, so we're we're using annual operating funds to make up some of the shortfall? Is that what I'm?
Yes.
That is the plan, yes.
Okay.
If it's if it's available, if it's not, they're just won't proceed with the.
Still changing the scope, yeah.
So they want to wait and see as we get through the winter months to see if there's going to be money left left over operating minutes.
That's correct.
So I don't know if there's any other questions. Or concerns about this? All right, with that, then, I guess, all in favor of putting item number nine, say aye. Aye. Great, so we will move forward on that. Okay, I think that's it then. And then we'll move on to item number ten. Peter, you'll be seeing a lot more of Peter, I'm sure, here, so welcome. And I know Fleech has been a great help as well. As we move, you know, forward with a lot of these projects, so. Let's move on to item number ten. So I wanted to give you guys an update. I know there's been a lot of conversation. About adding a northbound train station platform for Shoreline East Station. This has been. I mean, it was originally talked about even when they built the new trainstorm train stain platform back in twenty oh eight, twenty oh nine, something like that. And then about two years ago, I think there was some funding that was actually allocated. At the state level for this. And we were excited to learn that they this DOT has been moving forward very quickly with an actual design. And so. They're at the thirty percent design level right now, and it'll be going to sixty percent shortly within the next month. And they're looking actually to. Go to a public information session and going through the permitting process soon. I always want to look back through my notes. They gave us the timeline, and I don't know if Erin. Erin is on, but maybe she can help me out here. I gotta go back through my notes. I did not prepare for this. Oh, so basically, they're looking at a. The idea would be construction would start in twenty twenty five, and it's usually a two-year construction period with an opening in twenty twenty seven. So twenty twenty four would be spent with permitting. You know. And basically, this is all run by the state. The town doesn't really. Get involved in this. I know there had been some concerns about, you know, there's a lot of substantial wetlands that are next to. The. Train station, you can see it across the platform. Actually, there's quite a very beautiful, you know, wetlands there that I know a lot of people had been. Concerned about, we're going to have to have an offset for that because it's really. In order to add the second platform, we're gonna, they're gonna have to add an elevator. And with the new designs, you actually have to have two elevators in the station. And so it's going to be kind of a large, and I can put up the, I'll share my screen and show you the. The what it looks like. But so the good news is that it's on track. The funding is available. We're in the process of working on a on a wetlands offset. So there's about thirteen thousand square feet or about a third of an acre of wetlands. And so what we have to do is mitigate some other. Piece of land in town or nearby to establish. Upgrade that wetlands or whatever to offset what we're doing, what we're taking as part of this project. And so we're in the process of doing that. I know Aaron Mannix had been working hard on that. So let me find the. So the public can see this.
Oh, for those of us with longish memories, I'm thinking back to a press conference about sixteen years ago. In which this project was announced. And. At that time, the project included not only platforms on both sides. But it included a parking garage, a multi-story parking garage in the main lot.
And I asked them specifically about that, Al, and there is no plans to build a large parking lot. And I know there had been some concern about that. You know, they they're not going to be really making any changes to the parking area, except adding EV chargers. So there'll be a little bit of a redesign, but pretty much the parking lot is going to stay the same. Can you guys see this?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, so. And so as you can see here, this is the the elevator banks that will take you over to the the other platform that's going to be on the other side. And and really, the changes are just going to be to this area. There's not going to be doing much to the parking area. And it's, you know, the design is following similar to what they've done with some of the other stations in in along the shoreline. And we're actually the last town. In on Shoreline East to add the second platform. So it'll be, it'll be a big benefit to train service if they don't have to accommodate Madison. It'll, you know, where they have to stop and reverse in order to drop people off. And it will also, I'm assuming, allow us to get more frequent. You know, they skip Madison a lot. If you look at the schedules, they go from Guilford to Clinton because of the lack of the platform here. So. I know we've been struggling because there's been a reduction in Shoreline East service lately. That was more of a budget issue that but. I would think this is going to show. You know, you're making this kind of investment. That, you know, this the full service is going to be restored over time back to Shoreline East. So I just thought that was very exciting. This is something I know that was brought to my attention when I first got elected. And I've been working hard with the state delegation to ensure that it stays on the list. And so it was very exciting to see. You know, that. You know, there's actual design plans now. So there will probably be. A probably towards the end of February or early March is when there's going to be kind of a public hearing that the state DOT will have on the design plans. And at that point, the design plan will be sixty percent complete. So and then from there, you know, it has to go through deep approvals and Army Corps of Engineering. And that could take a long time, especially with the wetland permitting and showing the offsets and everything. That could take a while. So that's why they they gave us a timeline of of. Construction in twenty twenty five and an opening in twenty twenty seven. So any questions on that? This just shows, and we talked about, are they going to try to put solar? They may try to put solar on some of the panels here. And then they are putting EV chargers into the parking area. So. That'll help because that'll add some more charging facilities downtown as well. So any any other questions on that? Nope. Okay, so I think that's exciting news. And for people who take Shoreline East, that's definitely going to be a big. Benefit to our commuters that do use that, either going to New Haven or connecting to Metro North to go into Stanford or New York. So so that's exciting. So look out for that Public Information Center, whoever's watching this, that'll be scheduled sometime, like I said, end of February or March with more details on what the plan is and the timeline. Next item on the agenda, item number eleven, was just, I had wanted to give you an update and about. The grant funded projects, the capital projects, and so I'm going to share. My screen here again. I sent around to the board. A. All right, how do I? There we go. So I sent around to the board this list. And. Basically, it just highlights, you know what, I should probably use the PDF, but I don't have that available. But it just highlights that, you know, the next two years, if you go over to the far right column, it shows. Where kind of generally our expected construction is. So we're going to have a lot going on in the next. In twenty twenty four and twenty twenty five. And and these are projects, I just, these are not all CIP projects. These are just ones that are funded with grants. Some of these may require additional funding, and that's been accounted for in CIP that we may need to go for an appropriation. There's been kind of a running total that. The Board of Finance has been seeing that shows, and this is part of the packet you get on these grants that we would have to appropriate for a matching component if it was already not accounted for in CIP. And I would say the biggest one that is likely to be coming up in the next year is going to be this generator project. So, you know, it's it's running about three. So, you know, it's it's running about $3 million. We've received a million five now in grants. We're going to continue to look for other grants if possible. The only money that had been budgeted on this project that had been sitting in our CIP for a long time was just planning dollars. So it's a minimal amount of money. So this would be the largest appropriation that we would have to do to move forward on the project. So I think until we get a final design and timeline, it would be not prudent to. And also, this is coordinating with the Polson HVAC project, so it wouldn't be appropriate really to to you know, award or or vote on an appropriation at this point because this number could change depending on how the how the project design works its way through. But we'll know more, I think, probably in the spring. What this, you know, actual funding requirement might be. That's the bigger one. The second one is the Firehouse Project. That's about $3.3 million. We've received from the federal government, 2.4, 2.5 million dollars that we received last year through that Congressional Disrupted Spending Grant. And this had been sitting in CIP a long time, but there had not really been any funding allocated to it. So this will require some sort of appropriation. But we are pursuing some other grants for this as well. And so I'm, you know, I'm trying to be optimistic this year that we might be able to knock this 823 down even more with some additional grant funding for the project. These are good projects for grants because of just the nature of their emergency management. And I think also having the federal government endorse the project helps us with some of our state grant applications. So that project is, is, you know, there and for the anticipation, I put winter of 2024 for construction. I think that's probably aggressive, you know, as we we're now working with the OPM, we have to go through the architecture process. So that might be a little optimistic of when construction would start. But it's going to be later at the year, later this year at the earliest. And then some of the others, like the steep grant that we received, this was kind of a, we we've, this was kind of a thing where we found out that this was not in CIP. This was that project from last year. We thought it was just going to need to be repaired. We found out there was some hazardous material issues with the existing floor and that the whole floor was going to have to be replaced. So we applied for this grant. We were awarded the grant, but there is a matching component. So that's probably going to be coming early aside of any of these because that's due to get done in the spring. So we'll be coming back on that one pretty quickly for the $100,000 there. So so this just kind of summarizes the larger projects, like Flitlock, just so you know, this may not be required. We might be able to find funding within our Town Aid Road account. We're trying to work through and see if we're going to need additional funding. We're also going to be meeting again with our Council of Government because there is a lot of funding available through the regional COGS that DOT funding that we were trying to take advantage of. That was, these were two projects that we did. Or excuse me, the cops, Warpus one was one, and that's where the whole project is paid for by the funding from the COGS, so through the LOTSET program. So so a lot going on. And, you know, but but I think the good news is if you look at it, we're, you know, pretty much half of all of these major infrastructure projects that are being paid for through other sources. You know, versus more than half. So if you look at the, you know, overall size of the project amounts, and then you look at the grant awards. So, you know, we're just fortunate that we've been able to kind of move a lot of these forward without having to fund them 100%. So any questions on this list? So, okay, great. So it just gives you a little heads up of what might be coming. Most likely, the steep grant one for the gym floor will probably be coming up to us when we finalize that in February or so for an appropriation. And then, you know, the emergency shelter and the EOC projects, those will probably be this year sometime in terms of appropriations. Okay, so that is kind of that topic. Excuse me, item number 12 was just a follow-up discussion that we had had on, you know, we're going to be having to update a lot of our board and commission charges. And the suggestion had been to try to standardize. So Aaron had sent around a proposed kind of structure for these, and I think there was just a couple of things I wanted to talk about. So that, you know, because we have to, we've already talked about, I think Bicycle Pedestrian Committee and the let me see, GD, could you put up that stuff that was sent around? That was set up on the or sent around on the ordinances? But I can see if I can find it, I just. I'll go ahead and I can get these up. It's just going to take a second. Okay. Here, I'll GD, I think I could, I've got it here. GD? I can go ahead and pull it up if you want to stop sharing. Okay, great. Share screen. I had it here. Okay, here's the. All right. So this is just the standard kind of template, you know, that we would try to use. And then obviously, the purpose is going to be very specific, right? And then and then obviously, the membership terms of vacancies or things. And I wanted to talk to you a little bit about this, like, do we want to start standardizing the number of board members? And then also, some of our committees have alternates and some don't. And and I think it was the Bicycle Pedestrian Committee had requested alternates. And so I think I just wanted to have philosophical conversation about. I mean, I always viewed alternates as necessary when you are regulatory body because you want to be able to hold if you have quorum issues and you need to vote on an action item that, you know, an applicant has come in like for planning and zoning. So you don't want to cancel the meeting because you don't have a quorum. But if you have alternates, it allows you to manage that better. But I would think for other, just kind of your standard board and commission, we would really need to have alternates. So, you know, boards that don't do a lot of voting that has binding votes or any kind of regulatory relay, so. So that was my thinking was not having alternates unless there was like a certain standard was met. And then having all terms go to four years. There's a one or two committees, I think, that have five-year terms. I know the EDC has five years. I don't know what the origins of that was. And try to just convert everybody to a four-year term, so they're all in the same kind of pattern and cycle. So that was just some thoughts. Bruce, you know, had mentioned, I thought it was a good idea to try to. So what we would do is take this kind of standard form, go back and look at BPAC, update it to conform to this and do the same with the Affordable Housing Committee. And then moving forward, we try to use this, you know, as much as possible, and then not have like the advisors in the actual charge. And I thought that way we could just have, you know, just having it because sometimes we might not have a a natural expert, right, to assign to it. So I think instead that the first elect would just say, okay, it makes sense to have this person or that person being the liaison to that committee. So not actually have it in the charge. Because if we do a reorganization or we, you know, eliminate a department or something like that, that way you're not tied to something that just doesn't isn't as up to date. So I don't know if there's any thoughts on that?
I, I, oh, sorry.
You want to go first, Scott?
Sure, the I guess I agree with you completely on the on the alternates. I think for regulatory, it makes a lot of sense. I think, you know, all of our boards and commissions are public meetings. So the reality is, you know, anybody can show up and anybody can sort of be a part of the conversation. They're just not able to vote. So I think I guess I don't feel like we need alternates for every board and commission. And I like this four-year term thing. I think standardizing it, the only worry I might have with that is you know, if everybody's up at the same term. So as long as there's overlapping terms so that, you know, we're we're sort of transitioning and and having people come on. So we're not leaving the board, you know, you know, starting a board with a completely new board. I think that would not be effective.
Yeah, these would be staggered.
That was the word I was looking for.
Yeah, yeah, it would be staggered, just like we have her, which most of our boards are set up that way. There's a few outliers that aren't. And and we got to dig around to double check which ones. The only one that came to mind initially was EDC, and I didn't know if that was a state statute or why that was five years. So we were going to research that, and then we're going to go back and check if there was anything else. You know, that needed to be changed. And then I think you know, so and then I'm sorry, Bruce, did you have some thoughts?
So, yeah, so I, as I started, I think this is a really good run at what we talked about earlier. I agree with the general notion that if it's not a regulatory commission, that it probably doesn't need alternates. And Scott's right, these are public meetings and everybody has a voice in the public meetings. The four-year terms make sense. The staggered four-year terms makes sense. I am, I'll raise the same concern I had when we were doing the charter limiting the chairs to four years. I'm worried will be problematic in the event that we have a group where there's, you know, nobody who wants to be chair. And in this language, we don't really give ourselves a remedy for that.
This follows the charter.
Right, so it's a realized fear, but it's still a a concern I have. The
Well, isn't the, isn't the default, though, Bruce? I guess I don't remember it specifically in the charter, but if if somebody doesn't raise their hand, then can that same person then go back up again?
No.
After four years or is it term out?
Yeah, no, we didn't give ourselves an out.
But but I think the idea was that you have to appoint a vice chair who's willing to be chair, and that was not consistent with our boards and commissions before. So now every ward has to appoint a vice chair, knowing that that vice chair might have to act as chair. So you build in your plan.
Yeah. I mean, the charter is the charter, so there isn't really a lot we can do here. It just is is a concern. So I'm not proposing we do language that's contrary to the charter. I would like to see a section added, which would be a reporting back to the Board of Selectmen schedule.
I like that. I like that a lot, Bruce. I like that a lot. I think you know, we have plenty of boards and commissions that we don't hear from for for years. And I think that that's a smart move.
Right. And and as a section for a particular commission, it might be once a year, but for another one, it might be more frequently. But I think it's be good to set that expectation and codify it in our in our charges.
Yeah, maybe you leave the your point, maybe you leave the how often they come back to us a little vague, but the the point is they have to come back to us.
Right.
Well, I guess that would be, that would be a duty.
Right.
Yeah, duty. That would be a duty and responsibility. So we just have to make sure that that was listed as part of every charge has that as part of their duties and responsibilities. The other thing that they are also supposed to do this report at the end of the year that goes into the town annual report. And I almost want to put that as a bullet point because I don't think a lot of boards understand if that is kind of something that's expected.
Agreed.
I agree with the point that Scott and Bruce are making, but I think the responsibility is on us, the selectmen, to invite them to come and speak to us. The that's, it seems to me it's our responsibility to issue the invitation. It's not their responsibility to somehow force their way onto our agenda.
And that's a fair point, Al, in terms of maybe more of a robust rotational schedule or something like that that we we put forward. But we all know sometimes there are peaks and valleys of particular boards and commissions where it may or may not make sense to have them come and talk to us. So, you know, I think, you know, I think some boards and commissions are on different schedules, I guess is my point. You know, some might be a six-month report out, some might be a yearly point out, report out, depending on what they're doing.
Right. And now I don't think, you know, your idea is incompatible with the point I'm making. It's really two sides of the same mirror. The the commission needs to understand that they're going to have some reporting back to the board. It's up to the board of selectmen to establish an annual schedule of when those updates will happen.
I mean, I think the other thing that has come up that we just need to reflect on as we go into the budgeting process is that some boards and commissions have budgets and others don't. What the, you know, what those things are used for, the control mechanisms at the end of the year, funding isn't used. I feel like we do need to talk about some of that because you know, it's it's you have some board saying, well, they get $10,000 a year to do stuff. Why don't we get $10,000 a year, you know? So we kind of have these little pockets that are built in for some boards and commissions and others don't. And it was interesting, I learned in meeting, we're going to be having the Shellfish Commission come to the Board of Selectmen in February, that they collect rental fees for shellfish beds. And, you know, there's, there's a, it sounds like quite a bit of money sitting there that has been collected. They're a very active commission that does a lot of great things for the town. So I think it'll be really interesting to hear all the great things that are happening with the Shellfish Commission, but it's one of those that's been kind of off the radar, you know, from a board standpoint, even though we're all familiar with it. We see the clam digs. We know we have, this is an emerging industry again from Madison. But, you know, I was surprised. I didn't realize that they were the, they were the ones that actually handled leasing and collecting revenue for shellfish beds that lie within the town of Madison. So things like that, I think it's be a good exercise. But I think we need to think through more about how that's going to work with budgets and and and, you know, is it really a board and commission that should be having control over these funds? Or should it be more included in the department, department funding? And I don't know if that's something we would put in the charge, where there'd be a process that they have to follow. Or do we just leave that outside of it and just handle that from a, you know, budgetary, you know, just a budget, budget discussion?
Well, I like the at least calling out if if border commission has a budget, then here's their following roles and responsibilities. If, you know, if income generating, here's the following roles and responsibilities. And maybe the roles and responsibilities for income generating might be just coordination with the Finance Department or something like that. So it at least makes it specific that they're not out on an island, no pun intended.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, I did that.
Yeah, I know. Well, because I think we've had with some commissions at the end of the year, they'd have balances. And so the department would want to use those balances to complete a project or do something, but yet the commission was like, well, that's our funding. You know, so I think that's where there's a little bit of confusion perhaps about what that funding, purpose of that funding is for. So
Maybe maybe we need to be very specific, though, about it being town funding.
Right, well, I know.
In town income.
Well, and as you know, that that's kind of with every, even within the departments. You know, that tends to be you know, viewed as department money versus, you know, town money, so. But I think it's a worthwhile discussion, maybe during the budgeting process where we can, you know, I was going to pull a list of all this together. So and it's not that we're not trying to support the things that the boards and commissions are doing. But I just, I think trying to understand the bigger picture and like ultimately what the purpose of that funding is for, we need to kind of set some more guidelines, I think, so.
So I think as a So I think as a um, as a format, a section that raises the issue of, of revenue and budget. Um, as a placeholder, so that at least we're considering it when we go through the process, it's a good thing.
Yeah, okay. Okay. All right, well, so we'll, we'll kind of work this over a little bit more, and I think the idea was maybe to come back with the. BPAC and the uh, affordable housing charges again. At our next meeting, you know, kind of set up and structured like this. And then we can kind of look at those and uh, see if it kind of get, we get where we wanted. We may wanna go through all our. All our boards and commissions that are under ordinance and already. And update them too. We could do that through one big package, just so everything's consistent, because this is a great time to do it with the new charter, you know. And I think she'd sent out a list also, um, that includes those that we would have to. Set up ordinances, senior services, youth and family services, solid waste, coastal resilience, bike pad. And uh, affordable housing and facilities, those are the lists that we had that we have to get done. Um, but then I think we can look at all the other. All the other ones and see if there's a way we can just kind of do a simple update to all of them to conform with the structure, so. Okay. Any other questions on that? Um, all right, great. Uh, so we'll move on with that, and I think that's really it, so, um, pretty simple first of the year meeting. Um, I know it was. Kind of snuck up on, on us this meeting, but uh, it was quiet the last couple of weeks, which is good. So I guess the last thing is citizens' comments. Do we have any citizens on and hands raised? Nope. Yeah, I don't see anything, so, all right, here, no objection, uh, meeting is adjourned. Have a great day, guys. Stay safe.